Recording now.
All right, great, thanks Sarah. Welcome everyone who's joining. We see you and we'll be getting started here in a few minutes. It looks like we have a couple more people trickling in, so welcome. We are at 5:30, which is our start time. I'll just give us another minute here and just see if we have any more folks joining before we get started. All right, I guess I will go ahead and kick us off since we have a busy agenda for our hour and a half here together. So, welcome to our attendees and our panelists here. Tonight, this is the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Replacement Projects Public Hearing. We're here to talk tonight about the Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement. My name is Candace Gerich. I'll be your facilitator and Zoom host for the evening. I will start us off by just going over a few quick Zoom tips. And so to our attendees, and I see more joining, welcome. You are here tonight in listen-only mode, which means that you should be able to see the presentation and see the video of the staff members that are here today. But you won't be able to share your own video or unmute yourself. This is just to help reduce background noise and distraction. We definitely want to hear from you tonight, and we have two opportunities for you to participate on our agenda, and we're going to do that through Zoom. So I'm going to take a minute to review those controls right now. So if you are joining us on a computer or tablet, the bottom of your screen should look pretty similar to the slide here with a raise hand and Q and A box on the bottom. These are the features that you will need to know about for the moments that we have on our agenda to participate. The first I'll go over is the Q and A. So during the presentation tonight, we'll be taking questions from you all and then hold some time at the end of our presentation to go through and answer them. So if you have a question that comes up during the presentation or after and you would like the staff here to respond, you can click on this Q and A icon and a box should pop up right here. You can type in your question and hit send. We will be receiving those questions in the back end and then staff will respond verbally at the end of the presentation. If you are just on the phone tonight or have trouble using Q and A at all, you're also welcome to email questions at our email address, which is newbridge@portofhoodriver.com. But to the extent possible, we ask that folks submit their questions tonight through Zoom just to make sure that we don't miss them. The other button you'll need to know about here is raise hand. Also should be right at the bottom of your screen. And you will use that during the public comment portion of our agenda. So a big reason why we're here tonight is to be able to hear from you and take your verbal comments. So if you are going to want to give a verbal comment tonight, you'll let us know by clicking on that button. Again, that'll happen later in our agenda. We'll see that your hand is raised and when it's your turn to speak on you and you will be unmuted. If you click on the raise your hand and then decide you don't want to speak anymore, you can just click it again and it will unraise. And if you are on the phone, you can signal raise your hand by hitting star nine. I also want to point out that Sarah Amor is here. She's our technical helper tonight. So if you run into any issues with Zoom along the way, you can reach out to her. Her phone number is up there on the screen. It's 717-683-3166. And she will help you out. And also just want to note that the meeting tonight is being recorded. For accessibility, we'll post this recording on our website after tonight's meeting. So I'll give a quick overview of our agenda. We're going to start off by hearing from the project team. They'll provide a project overview and kind of then spend the bulk of the time talking about the Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement. That's the reason why we're here tonight. So we'll talk more about what that document is and some of the highlights from the analysis and the findings. Key areas for public feedback and next steps. And as I mentioned, we have two points on our agenda here tonight that we will want to hear from you. That's the Q and A and the public comment. So once we get through the presentation, we'll hold about 15 minutes to respond verbally to the written questions that we receive. For those questions, we'll ask that you just keep it appropriate and relevant to the content shared tonight. Again, we won't be responding and writing, but the team will be here to answer verbally. I will read the questions we receive out loud and they will give answers. And then we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. And this will be your chance to provide a verbal comment that will be part of the formal record for the Supplemental Draft EIS. And again, for verbal comments, we'll just ask that you keep them appropriate and to the extent possible, relevant to the content about the Supplemental Draft EIS. Staff will not be responding to verbal comments tonight, but rather they're just here to listen and hear from you. So if you have a question that you want the team to answer, please be sure to submit that as a part of the Q and A portion of the agenda. And then I also just want to note for folks that, a reminder that tonight is not your only opportunity to write a comment. The public comment period runs through January 4th. So you have lots of time and there's many different ways you can submit a comment as well. We'll go over all of that later on in our agenda and then we'll wrap things up by talking about next steps for the project. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Great Candace, thank you very much. My name is Kevin Greenwood. I'm the Bridge Replacement Project Director here at the Port of Hood River. And it's been almost two years to the date, the last time that we convened an open house to kick off the NEPA process for the Supplemental Draft DIS and the final EIS Recordive Decision. And so while we wish we could gather in person, we're happy to see so many people attend virtually tonight. And I'm glad that everybody made the effort to be here. So the reason that we are here tonight is to really have a conversation with the public, with you in attendance here about this project, about the changes and impacts of this project since the prior work had been done. We've really met and reached a major milestone with the Supplemental Draft DIS. And the port with the help of federal highways and the Oregon Department of Transportation and really the entire mid Columbia region, we are eager to replace this aging obsolete bridge. And this release this month is really the continued advancement of getting us one step closer to the project. Next slide. Just give a brief project over here overview. I think everybody that's logged in has traveled across the existing bridge and knows that it needs to be replaced. There's thousands of jobs and tons of agricultural products that utilize this bridge. And we really understand that it's critical that it continued to be in good operational condition. Replacing the bridge would address water navigation issues, roadway travel issues. It would add a bike ped connectivity, address seismic vulnerability and ensure safety. And as you know, as many of you know, this has been underway for many decades, at least since the late 1990s. And I'll be reviewing some of that history in the next slide. The coming slides. So the existing and the future conditions with the existing conditions, we all know how narrow those lanes are. They're less than nine feet, five inches. The standard traveling is 12 feet. So it's considerably substandard. There are height, width and weight restrictions on the current bridge. There are no shoulders as the picture shows. And it's one of the toughest spots on the entire Columbia River system for captains to navigate through the, through the horizontal clearance. And there is no bike pedestrian path as well. So the future conditions would include two, two standard width lane, lanes, which are 12 feet wide, two standard width shoulders with all restrictions lifted. Those shoulders would be eight feet in eight foot width. It would be improved barge navigation with an increased opening width to 450 feet. And then the addition of the bike ped path would include two mid-bridge overlooks. Next slide. So some of the images that we have produced to demonstrate the before and after images of the replacement bridge, the top bridge is the existing shot and the lower graphic is the future look for the bridge. And this, these images are crafted from the trail at the Hood River Inn. And many of you have probably walked along that trail. And you'll notice that there are some key differences. One is the future bridge has a higher overall profile, even though the lift is removed and that there are fewer piers in the river as well. Next slide. I mentioned the, the, the bridge history. It was built in 1924. Replaced ferry service between White Salmon, Benjen area and Hood River. It was, the work to replace the bridge began in the 1990s with the feasibility study back in the age of earmarks. That effort was done through the Southwest Washington RTC. A draft environmental impact statement was completed in 2003 where an identified preferred bridge alignment and three feasible bridge types were identified. In 2011, the bridge type size and location study was completed, which identified the preferred bridge type and also established some, some draft design criteria for the new bridge. And then after a little bit of a gap with the assistance of the Oregon State Legislature, House Bill 2017 allowed for funding to complete the NEPA process, which started wholeheartedly in 2018. So we engaged the community, the tribes, the agency partners and elected officials in both Oregon and Washington. We also advanced the project design and updated the environmental impact analysis, including a reevaluation of the effort since so much time had passed. And so here we are today and all of that work over the last two years has been completed. And so the supplemental draft EIS is now complete and is the focus for the reason that we are here today. Next slide. So just talking a little bit about the, the recent accomplishments here in the last year or two. The bridge design has been advanced. We utilized a public EIS Environmental Impact Statement Working Group made up of elected officials and appointed officials on both sides of the river. And we shared the concepts and provided feed and received feedback from that group in as we moved these concepts through the, through the process. We evaluated the approaches in White Salmon and Hood River. We developed conceptual aesthetic bridge treatments to be considered during the construction phase. As noted, we updated the environmental and traffic impact analysis. We have performed extensive agency and by state and tribal consultation, which will continue on long past NEPA. And we also obtained a preliminary navigation determination from the United States Coast Guard. In some ways, this may be as important as anything, but we've really established some significant by-state partnerships with the Clickatt and Hood River County agencies to collaborate, not just on NEPA, but really what's the future process for the construction and what are the policy requirements and the funding needs going to be to get the bridge replaced? And those efforts will continue on long past the NEPA processes over. And recently, we also had a huge accomplishment when a joint application by the Port of Hood River and Clickatt County for a $5 million federal build grant was awarded, which will allow us to advance pre-construction activities, which will take place in robust next year. So public engagement is a huge part of the NEPA process. It's critical that we get the public's input on this effort. And I'm sure many of you have been involved with the project since the project was relaunched in December of 2018. And since that time, we've met and heard from the community in a number of different ways. We've had stakeholder interviews. We've had, like I mentioned, the open house and a wonderful survey. We had almost 1,000 surveys, forms that were submitted, which is really unheard of. We had information tables at harvest festivals and at grocery stores on both sides of the river. And we've really reached out to populations that might not normally be, might not normally see these types of things. And so we've really made an effort to reach out to the Hispanic and Latin American communities and, and others. And so what we've really heard from that, from that effort was that there's strong support for the project and a desire to move ahead quickly as possible. In fact, I think the phrase "build it yesterday" was repeated on more than one occasion. There is a focus on funding a new bridge right now. There was also support for the preferred alternative, which is located just to the west of the existing bridge and for the project in general. There was a desire to see increased accountability for the toll revenue and transparency for the receipts and expenditures of the toll revenue. And there's also concerns about increasing toll costs and impacts due to increased toll. There was also concern about minimizing disruptions during construction. There was strong support for a fixed span bridge instead of the current lift system. As long as it supports navigational needs, which was really one of the reasons that the Coast Guard was able to give us the preliminary navigation determination. And there was a desire for the aesthetics to match or enhance the natural surroundings. And of course, there was interest in keeping those costs down. So those were the main themes that we heard during that public engagement. Next slide. Another important aspect of the project is the tribal consultation and the state and federal and local agency coordination. We've met with 10 federal agencies, including the Federal Highways Administration, the Coast Guard and the Bureau of Indian Affairs. There were nine state agencies that we are having our meeting with, both Departments of Transportation, the Washington Oregon Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation have been met with. All of the local, regional and county agencies, including the cities of White Salmon, Hood River and Clickatt and Skamania Counties, in addition to Hood River County. And there's been other nonprofit organizations as well, including the History Museum of Hood River County and the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation. And I would note that our consultation with the tribes and our partners will continue long past the NEPA process through construction and, and beyond. Next slide. So as we look ahead, here's another viewpoint of the bridge location. This is from the White Salmon side looking into Oregon towards the east. We will continue our extensive coordination with the community and key stakeholders. This includes continuing to coordinate with the tribes through the design permitting, construction and beyond, while honoring their, their sovereign nation status, which is really important and really critical that we have the Federal Highways Administration as a partner. This project is an opportunity to build upon the relationships with the tribes in the area, the four treaty tribes and other interested and involved tribes. We are continuing to develop a collaborative by-state work plan with our, with the communities in both Hood River and Clickatt County to prioritize tasks necessary for construction and including advocating for necessary policy requirements in both state capitals for, and funding for the new bridge. And as I noted, we'll continue to meet and engage our community stakeholders, the tribes and the agency partners as long as this process continues. Next slide. So just a brief review of the environmental review process. This is a schedule and you can see that started in 2018 and we are in the fourth quarter of 2020. We've made a lot of progress on completing the environmental review process. We're excited to reach the milestone of releasing the supplemental draft DIS and continue to make progress toward the combined final EIS Recordive Decision, which you can see there at the end of the second quarter in 2021. And we are just very excited that you're all here. And at this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to Angela Finley, who is the project manager with WSP. And Angela, at this point, I'll hand the baton off and you can take it over.
Great, thank you Kevin. Yes, I've been leading the environmental documentation for the port. And so right now I'm going to give an overview of what the Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement is and a preview or an overview of some of the analysis that was conducted for it. So let's go to the next slide. And again, I'll just mention that if you have questions on anything that I'm presenting, be sure and type in those questions in the chat function. And we'll have a little bit of time after I go through these slides to try and answer any questions you have. So as Kevin mentioned, the Draft Environmental Impact Statement was published in December of 2003. 17 years ago, that's hard to believe, but it is what it is. And so what we needed to do with the help of federal highways and the Oregon Department of Transportation is decide whether that document was still valid and we could just jump right into a final environmental impact statement or whether we needed to prepare a supplemental document. And some of the considerations that we made was, were there any changes made to the alternatives that were evaluated in the draft EIS? Are there any new environmental impacts or benefits that were not disclosed previously? We're also looking at just the lapse of time that had transpired between the prior draft and today. And so we prepared what's called a NEPA reevaluation to really look at that past work, how valid it was, what can be used, what needed to be updated and the determination made at that time. And agreed upon by the Federal Highway Administration was yes, this project should prepare a supplemental draft EIS. And so that's where we are today. What it does is it provides an updated set of data and analysis. It includes addressing some new regulations that had occurred over that time period. And it is really a companion document to the draft EIS itself. Next slide, please. Kevin went over the project purpose and need earlier in one of his slides. This is the foundation, as I call it, for an environmental impact statement. It's really explaining why this project is being proposed. The need statements are really the problem statements. What are the current problems out there today with the existing bridge? Or what problems do we anticipate in the future? And so as Kevin mentioned, we looked at transportation. What is the present capacity of the bridge to move vehicles and trucks and transit across it? What are the future transportation demands? The lack of pedestrian and bicycle facilities? I think everyone that I've talked to who lives in the, the mid-gorge area always has kind of a horror story about driving across this bridge. It seems like everybody is aware of the safety concerns with the narrow lanes and lack of shoulders. We have legislation that is asking that we move this project forward. We have hazards associated with the river navigation. And it's, the bridge itself is seismically obsolete. So those are our problem statements. And really what we looked at in the draft EIS and the supplemental draft EIS is what are the alternatives that solve that problem? And how well do they do it? So we'll go ahead and move to the next slide. Where we talk about some of the alternatives. So here is yet another comparison of the existing bridge. This is representing kind of a, if you were in the river, what would the bridge look like? It's actually taken from the, the tip of the hook at the port property, looking east toward the bridge, the existing bridge on the top there and representation of the future bridge on the bottom. Again, you notice the difference in height and the openness with fewer piers in the water. There's about half as many in-water piers with a replacement bridge. So let's take a look at the two, we call build alternatives that were evaluated in the supplemental draft EIS. We call those alternative EC2 and alternative EC3. Alternative EC2 is the preferred alternative at this point in time. And that preferred alternative is shown on the graphic there on the right-hand side of the slide as the orange line. Just to the west of the existing bridge, if you look closely, you'll see that existing bridge in there. And then EC3 is represented by the blue line. As you can see, they both on the Oregon side tie into Button Bridge Road, very close to where the existing bridge lands. And then on the Washington side, they all tie into SR14 just to the west and just to the east respectively. The graphics, oops. Thank you. I just wanted to point out, we've talked about the navigation component. These graphics there on the lower left-hand side of your slide, furthest to the left is a profile view of the existing bridge. And you can see that the lift span is shown there, being able to extend the vertical clearance up to 148 feet above the water when the bridge is fully up. And having that 57-foot high clearance when the lift is down. And also note, the horizontal clearance is about just less than 250 feet. Whereas in the new bridge, a fixed span bridge without a lift span, the horizontal clearance expands out to 450 feet as well as having a maximum vertical clearance of 90 feet under the bridge in the center of the main span. Now we can move to the next slide. Thanks. Here's a closer look of the connections for the preferred alternative EC2. In the top graphic, you'll see a two, two-lane roundabout connection. In the top graphic, you'll see a two lane roundabout connection from the bridge to SR 14. And on the Oregon side, again, just a really tight connection coming back onto Button Bridge Road, connecting fully there at Eastport Marina Drive. Everything is just slightly to the west. And then in comparison, if we go to the next slide, we'll see the eastern version, alternative EC three. Again, a similar connection with that two lane roundabout on SR 14. Just east of the existing connection. And the same story, just east of the connection on the Oregon side. At where the existing bridge ties in. And then the other graphic there is just showing kind of what the changes are in that main span to see the 300 foot navigation channel with a much larger or wider opening of 450 feet. Which is Kevin mentioned, really helps the tugboat operators and other vessel operators be able to navigate this stretch of the river. There's a bend in the river just downstream that the tugboats need to position for, and that gets really difficult in strong westerly winds. All right. So now we can move forward and talk a little bit about the environmental analysis that was conducted. As you can see from the list of bullets here, there are a lot of different resources that were looked at. I'm not going to go through all of them today. Just the ones that are bolded, I'll quickly quickly go through what our analysis was and some of the impacts or benefits associated with them. So we'll start off with environmental justice, which comes from a presidential executive order that requires federal agencies to make sure they consider whether there are disproportionate and adverse effects to populations, minority populations or populations of low income households. And so we did some demographic analysis to determine that we did have minority populations in the area as well as low income households on both sides of the river. And so we needed to analyze those impacts. And some of those were associated with with permanent residents in the area and some were associated with the White Salmon Treaty Fishing Access Site on the north side of the river. Just west of the bridge, which is where one location of several along the Columbia River where four Native American tribes have an access point to conduct fishing on the river. What we found was there are construction impacts in terms of noise, air and dust emissions, vibration during some of the construction activities, particularly in water vibration that may have some disturbance or impacts to fish. As well as obstacles in the river with heavy equipment that could inhibit some of the fishing activities on the river. Longer term, for low income households, we know that the current bridge is told. We expect the future replacement bridge also to be told. We don't know the tolling rate structure at this point, as Kevin mentioned, that's something that will still need to be determined. But if there are toll increases in associated with the future replacement bridge, we know that those could be a financial burden to low income households in the area. Folks who use the bridge to commute for services or work or social trips. So overall, our finding was that this project would have disproportionately high and adverse effect to minority and low income populations. I won't get into some of the mitigation that we have proposed in the supplemental draft E I S for those impacts, but but we do address and have some ideas how to minimize those impacts. We'll keep going to the next topic, which is the fish and wildlife resources. We are looking both at aquatic habitat for for species in the water as well as species on land, looking at the terrestrial habitat, the impact of stormwater runoff. And also, and again, the construction impacts. There would be a reduction of in water bridge peers with a replacement bridge, which has a lot of benefits in terms of aquatic habitat. There would be, however, a slight increase of shading by the replacement bridge because it would be a slightly wider bridge. There could be up to just over two acres of vegetation disturbance primarily on the Washington shoreline as that area is more vegetated and less developed compared to the Oregon side of the bridge. A a great benefit of the project is the stormwater detention and treatment that would come with a replacement bridge. As many of you know, today, stormwater that is on the bridge just runs through the steel grating and straight into the river without any type of treatment. The replacement bridge would have a fully contained stormwater treatment system, which would detain all stormwater runoff on the bridge. Move it to stormwater treatment facilities on both sides of the river before it is released either through infiltration infiltration or back into the Columbia River. Construction activities again pose the greatest impact on fish and fish habitat. We are anticipating construction to be approximately six years from start to finish. That includes three years to construct the new bridge. Then move traffic from the existing bridge over to the new bridge and then another three years to remove the existing bridge. Some of that duration is associated with working within the having the higher impact activities constrained to what are known as in water work windows. Those are seasons that the both the Washington and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife set for times when there are fewer fish, particularly juveniles in the river for projects like this to have adverse effects. We'll move on to the next slide. So we're changing now to historic resources. As you know, this bridge has been here as as Kevin mentioned, built back in the in the 20s. So it is a historic resource that is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. That triggers some additional federal regulations such as section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and section 4 F of the U S Department of Transportation Act. We've done some analysis to understand what are the significant historic properties in the project area, the bridge being one, and then there are two railroads and several houses that are also historic. However, the only resource, historic resource that we would have an adverse impact to at this time is the existing bridge. And we are working with a variety of organizations and the two state department or state historic preservation officers to develop appropriate mitigation for that effect at this time. We'll go to the next slide. Additionally, we looked at parks and recreation facilities. Directly within the project footprint, there is a planned park on the North Shore Bridge Park that the city of White Salmon is in a planning process for on Clickitack County owned lands. And so we have just kind of their conceptual plan for that park. You can see that the existing bridge kind of crosses over the middle of it under the preferred alternative. And alternative EC three, they would both cross over the park as well. The graphic showing here is the preferred alternative crossing over to the west. And so we are, we are looking at the impacts associated with that crossing and what it would those types of impacts, how they would affect or have minimal effects to the recreation activities that are proposed on that parcel. On the Oregon side of the river, we have the waterfront trail, which is the green line that wraps around the edge of the port property there as well as continues to the east in front of the Best Western Hotel. Minimal impact to the the trail, just realigning the bridge. And it would be a slightly wider bridge, as we've mentioned, so there would be a little bit more shading over that trail. We're looking at just a temporary construction impact that might require users of the trail to take a detour route for some of the construction during some of the construction activities. And then our third recreational resource affected by directly affected by the project. Particularly under the preferred alternative is the ports of Hood Rivers Marina Park and Boat Basin. You can see that the west western alignment alternative EC two does encroach on the ports property. There would be some temporary construction impacts as well as some permanent impacts in terms of especially in terms of loss of parking associated with that alternative. We'll go to the next slide. Transportation, of course, is one of the elements that we need to analyze in a transportation project. So we looked at the current levels of vehicles crossing the bridge in terms of were there points of congestion? Were drivers delayed, stuck in delay while they were on the bridge or using or entering or exiting the bridge? And then we also looked at other modes of transportation besides vehicles is the pedestrians and bicycles as well as the river navigation. So what we found from the traffic analysis is really the main pinch point where drivers experienced delay is there at the connection, the north connection to SR 14. Currently, that's a signalized intersection that tends to have a fair amount of backup, particularly for northbound traffic in the afternoon rush hour. And that is part of the reason that we were looking at making an improvement to that intersection connection and not just replacing it with a with a traffic signal, but with that two lane roundabout that would be able to move the traffic smoother and more quickly through that intersection and reducing the backup that happens on the bridge. And Kevin mentioned the safety improvements with wider travel lanes and shoulders that benefits all vehicles crossing the bridge and then certainly providing a new facility for bicycles and pedestrians to to travel across river on something other than a car. The graphics at the bottom of this slide are just three examples of some aesthetic treatments that could be applied to the bridge. By no means are these the only choices. These are just some representative examples of what the replacement bridge could look like in the future. And if you notice closely, there are some overlooks shown there just to the left where there might be some benches and just a wider gathering space for people to enjoy the views down the gorge and the surrounding area. We mentioned our consultation with Native American tribes. Four of those tribes, the Yakama, the Warm Springs, the Umatilla and the Nez Perce have treaty fishing rights on this section of the river. And so it was really important that we understand what those rights are and make sure that we understand how the construction and permanent operation of this bridge could affect those those treaty rights. And so we consulted with the tribes and we are continuing to consult with the tribes on this issue to not only understand how their access points to the river and as well as one fish processing site that's also on the Washington shore are affected by the project, but also about them traveling to and from those sites and fishing and the actual fishing activities conducted on the river. Like other folks traveling the bridge during construction, there may be delays that are faced through minor detours during construction. Also construction impacts such as noise and dust. More permanent, on the permanent impact side, there is a portion of the land parcel that the White Salmon Treaty Fishing Access Site is located that extends into the river. And on a portion of that submerged parcel, this project would require a both a temporary construction and a permanent easement to cross over that corner of that parcel that is submerged. Other other impacts associated with the treaty fishing access sites or fishing on the river. There could be changes in the way or that fishing is conducted, just in terms of sometimes current fishing activities use the peers of the bridge to tie up their vessels to or their nets to and with fewer appears in the water, there would be fewer places to make those tie ups to. And also the introduction of a shared use path, particularly on the west side of the bridge potentially gives more exposure to users of that path to the treaty fishing access site. We've heard some concern about that from tribal members about that. More visibility of activities that the tribal members conduct. We'll go on to the next slide, which I believe is the last resource that I will be summarizing before we move on to the Q and A. And this is our visual impact analysis. You've seen a lot of these renderings, again, what it looks like today. And what it looks would like look like in the future. It seems that as you get further away from the bridge, the differences are maybe a little bit less noticeable, although it's certainly a slightly different higher bridge and the arrangement of peers in the water. In terms of impacts from to the visual resource during construction, there is extra lighting and signage and activities in the vicinity of the bridge that aren't normally there. There would be through adding the shared use path and the overlook, we are creating opportunities that many folks don't have today. You can't really look up and down the gorge when you're driving on the bridge. Because of such the tight lanes and the the steel grading that usually you're pretty much focusing on the car in front of you or oncoming traffic. So it's it's hard to get a good look of the beautiful Columbia River Gorge. All right, we'll move on to the next slide. So I just wanted to remind folks that I think Candace mentioned it at the beginning of this presentation. As we are in the comment period for folks to provide the project team with comments on the supplemental draft E I S. That comment period started on November 20th and runs through January 4th. We completely welcome your comments on the document and as the more specific you can be in your comments, the more helpful it is for our team to understand your concern or your support for an alternative. Whether you feel that the conclusions in the document are well supported through the analysis. As well as any comments on the engagement process of the team, making sure that you're aware of the project. The more The more specific it can be on the comments, the more able we are to address those through design revisions or additional impact analysis to make sure that your concerns are addressed. The arrow at the bottom shows kind of where we are in the process. We've published the supplemental draft, we're now in that light blue second box through January, and then we will begin working on really reading through or listening to your comments, responding to them, figuring out how we address those, the extent that we can address those, and then we will move into publishing a combined final environmental impact statements along with federal highways record of decision, which selects the preferred solution for the project. And with that, I think we are finally to our question and answer session. So I'll hand it back over to Candace to facilitate those, those questions.
Great, thank you Angela and Kevin as well. For folks who maybe joined a little late, I will just recap our ground rules now for the question and answer portion. So we are holding up to 15 minutes to answer any questions you may have after seeing that presentation. We, again, we, you can submit your questions to us by clicking on the Q and A box there at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Another box should pop up and you can type your question right in there and hit send. If you are participating on the phone in audio only mode, you're also welcome to submit your questions to us to our project inbox, which is newbridge@portofhoodriver.com. We ask that you just keep your questions appropriate and to the extent possible, related to the content shared tonight or about the supplemental draft EIS in general. So either clarifying questions about something you heard or something that we didn't cover that you would like to know more about. We will compile any questions that we get in and I'll read them out loud and hand it over to the project team to answer them and provide a verbal response. So with that, I'll take a look, it doesn't look like we have any questions so far. But maybe we'll just hang tight for a minute here if folks are thinking about them or submitting them. Again, moving forward into the future, if you think of a question later on that you need to get answered to help inform the comment you want to submit on the SDIS, you again can email us and we will get back to you. All right, and I see some questions coming in. Okay, so first question I see here is about the proposed pedestrian and bicycle lanes, wondering that they're saying that that's a great improvement over the existing condition and wondering if those lanes can be widened, thinking that there will be a likely increase in demand in the future. Who on, Angela, is that a question that you can answer? Again, I'll just restate the question on that one, I think is can the bike ped path on the bridge be widened from what's planned anticipating a future demand and needing of a wider path?
Great question, and it's exciting to know that people are already anticipating having that, that facility there. I would say, of course, it could be widened, but it comes with a price. So I'm going to draw on Stuart Benyon, who is our engineering lead for the project and a structural engineer to talk a little bit about the trade offs on that. But yes, I think right now we have it at 16 feet, I believe Stuart, is that correct? That's not the overlook width, but the, the path itself.
I believe to clarify that the opening itself is 16 feet. That's to provide two feet of clear for a 12 foot wide use down the middle of that. And to answer the question, as you said, economically, if you define that projectly and get it included in the original construction of the bridge, the economical savings is much higher to come back in and widen it in the future is possible. But due to the length, complexity of the bridge, it would be a very expensive proposition, but it can be done.
Great, thank you. I'm going to move on to the next question here, wondering if the, if bicyclists and pedestrians crossing the bridge, will they be able to cross for free or will there be a toll?
Right now, we're not anticipating that, that the non-motorized use would be told. So pedestrians and bicyclists are expected to be able to be exempt from tolls.
Great, thank you. Another one on the bike ped lane. Let's see that they, the question is that it's only on, I think, the west side, is that accurate?
Yes, right now we're showing a facility on the west side of the bridge. Again, it comes down to a cost issue to have facilities on both sides of the bridge. And then also for consideration is being able to make sure that we can connect the facility to other pet and bike facilities on both shores.
Great, thank you Angela. Let's see, we have a question here asking about the six year timeframe for construction. Wondering, does that mean that the bridge will not be available to use for six years? Does six years include removal of the old bridge? Will the new bridge be available to use while the old bridge is being removed?
Stuart, you want to tackle that one?
Would love to, thank you Angela. Yeah, the six year duration has some variability to it, but is essentially the first three years to construct the new bridge and then move traffic onto that new bridge and three years to remove the existing bridge, give or take some months on each side.
Thank you. Let's see. Angela, there's a question here about how will low income issues be addressed? So that was something you mentioned in the presentation and, and did it really get into and wondered if maybe you could explain that a little bit more now.
Yes, so what we have committed to in the environmental impact statement is that, that the project will continue to, to work with the community and understand what those burdens are and engage the community in looking at some options for, for mitigating that. So sometimes that is making sure that that folks have access to the electronic tolling option. Sometimes it could be considering reduced or exempt fares, but at this time the tolling analysis is at such a conceptual level. It's impossible to know, will the tolls even be increasing? Kevin, do you want to talk a little bit more about that effort?
Yes, as soon as I can unmute myself. Yeah, I, I would add also that I think that it's anticipated that there will be an exit, the current exemption on buses and mass transit will continue on with the new bridge. But as far as the tolling, there's a number of issues that simply haven't been identified and one is the, the cost of the, the new bridge. Everything is so preliminary in nature at this point that we simply don't know. We don't have a good, accurate representation of the cost of the new bridge, which is critical for knowing what the tolls will be. In addition, we will also be looking for state and federal grants and appropriations, which are another metric of the toll need. And again, those are, we've had some success, but we will continue to be working on appropriations and grant requests for the foreseeable future. But, but at this point, we will probably be looking at traffic and revenue analysis, which will be a component of, of tolling, you know, in the next year. And so we do plan on starting that process. Last year, the port did undertake a sketch analysis for traffic and revenue and that was really more of an exercise to show the types of assumptions that would be made as tolls would be considered. There are a number of examples in that sketch analysis, which can be found on the port's website under the resource link. But those are purely hypothetical at this point. So we anticipate the next year tightening down and doing additional analysis aside from NEPA for the next phase of bridge replacement.
Thank you Kevin and Angela. I'm going to switch topics here. We have a couple of questions related to the historic resource impacts. Mentioning that the bridge is in a national scenic area and wondering if there are any issues in terms of historic impacts because it's a part of that national scenic area. And related, there's another question about the design of the bridge and how can the, the fixed span box girder bridge type be chosen now without knowing how that could comply with the requirements for the national scenic area?
Okay, great questions. And so, yes, I mean, we are definitely within the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. The, interestingly enough, the touchdowns of the bridge are exempt because they're within the urban areas of White Salmon and Hood River. But the portion of the bridge over the Columbia River will require a national scenic area permit. And we have been engaged throughout this project, not only during the supplemental draft EIS development, but also during the draft EIS back in the early 2000s. A bridge type and location study in 2010 to 2011, always engaging with the the gorge commission staff to talk about how this project can be permitted to make sure that we are advancing the project with something that will be permissible. So yes, we will be taking into account the historic element of the bridge, the recreational component of it. And so right now you will see in the supplemental draft that that is still an issue that needs resolution. The actual submittal for a permit, an NSA permit would not happen until after the NEPA process when the project gets closer to construction. The second question was about selecting the bridge type at this time. Again, that has been done in consultation with the Columbia Gorge staff to make sure that we are not putting the cart before the horse, that it's being done in consultation with, with the scenic area folks and not just the, the, the commission staff, but also the US Forest Service as the land and the land managers for that, for the scenic area. Kevin, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
I think the only thing I would maybe say is that, you know, the friends of the gorge have made comment through the prior processes. And one of the comments that I hear continually is visually unobtrusive. And so the key being that if you're in the gorge and you're looking at the bridge, we might be missing the point. That we want to make sure that, that the gorge speaks to itself. And so there has been some interest that you wouldn't want a, a bridge that was too, too prominent in the gorge.
Great, thank you. We have just a few minutes left of our 15 minutes for Q and A and a couple of questions here. So we'll see if we can get through the remaining ones. Angela, can you speak a little bit more to what makes the preferred option, the preferred option? So maybe find some of the key differences with that option and the other alternatives that have been looked at?
Sure. So some of the, the biggest differences between the two alternatives is what happens at the approaches where the bridges touch down. So for example, on the Oregon side, it's a little bit of a trade off between having land impacts to land uses either on the Port of Hood River's property or if under alternative EC3, that was the one that landed to the east, that would displace the marketplace structure that has a handful of businesses in that building as well as some of the hotels residences. And so that was a trade off that, one of the considerations that tipped the scale to select EC2 as a preferred alternate because it wouldn't have the displacements and acquisition of that private property. On the worst, Washington side, we're dealing with more natural resources and cultural resource impacts. There tend to be fewer of those impacts on the west side than on the east side. But as you can imagine, many of the resource impacts are very similar with the alternative. So it's a, it's a small difference, but in an important one, especially in terms of private property and cultural and natural resources.
Great, thank you. And we have just a couple of minutes left and one question asking about, are there options for reduced fares via booklets for low income workers? I wonder if that's a question we can answer or if anyone on the team can provide a little bit more information either way.
Kevin, I don't know if you want to address this one. I, I can mention that in the supplemental draft EIS, we talk, we list a, a host of mitigation options that can be considered as that tolling and revenue study advances, such as reduced toll rates. Let's see, I'm trying to look at them, making sure that they could, that we're waiving those, possibly waiving account maintenance fees on the electronic toll system. I think dealing with any delinquent tolls, making sure that there aren't burdens that way. So I think reduced and exempt tolls are something that's being considered, but none of that will be decided at this point. We're just keeping the door open and encourage people to stay engaged with the project to be part of that discussion. Kevin, anything to add on that?
Really, I think that's something that the port has looked at for many, many years. So I think that's just one of those issues that we'll continue to be exploring and find ways to, to provide relief, working with nonprofits in the gorge as well.
Great, thank you everybody for submitting your questions and to the team for providing some answers. I'm going to keep us moving, but just remember, you know, as you're looking materials over and thinking about submitting comments, you are welcome to email us if you have additional questions. So with that, I want to move us into our public comment portion of our agenda. So again, for folks that have maybe joined late, we're running a little behind time, but we will hold a full 30 minutes for comments if there's people that want to speak. We want to make sure that we hear from you tonight. Again, just a few quick reminders and ground rules. We ask that you keep comments respectful and relevant to the project. Just a reminder again that this is being recorded. Staff will not be responding to comments, rather they're just here to Staff will not be responding to comments, rather they're just here to listen and the comments will be collected as a part of the formal SDIS record. They will be responded to in the final EIS that will come out later this, next summer. So if you wish to make a verbal comment tonight, you will click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For folks on the phone, if you want to raise your hand, you hit star nine and we'll see your hand raised associated with your phone number. When it is your turn, I'll call on you and we'll unmute you and then you can give your comment. I'm going to do my best to keep track of the order that hands go up and call on folks in the, in that order. And we'll take care to make sure that everybody who has a hand raised gets a chance to comment before we come back around and take additional comments from people. Again, if you raise your hand and then decide you no longer want to make a comment, you can just go ahead and click the button again and it will unraise it. We're going to ask that people keep their comments to two minutes, again, just to make sure that we have the time to hear from everybody. I'll be keeping time and I'll let you know when your two minutes is up and can provide a 10 second warning to help you wrap your comment up. And again, just don't forget, tonight is not your only chance to provide a comment. The comment period goes through January 4th and there's many ways you can submit a comment. Again, you can submit it by email, you can call and leave a voicemail if you want to give a verbal comment, but not tonight. You can write and we also have an online comment form and all of those options are listed here on this slide. So with that, I will turn it over to you and look to see for some raised hands if there are folks that want to give a verbal comment tonight. And I'm not seeing any hands go up quite yet, but we'll just give folks another minute. All right. I'm going to take the silence as a, as a cue that folks are maybe not wanting to give a verbal comment tonight. And I will keep moving us on. Oh, and here we go. I see I have one hand now raised from Jan Kelly. Jan, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you.
Thank you. Actually, this is Jan's husband, Gil, if I could, using her computer. We're together here. Thank you so much. A very clear presentation and I really, really appreciate it. And of course, the new bridge will be a huge asset for both the Oregon and Washington communities. Related to a question I asked earlier, I just would, reflecting on the 1920s relation of the first bridge, it's really a hundred year investment. And so I think it's important to think about that this is a hundred year investment likely. And so on, on two points I would raise in that respect. One is, I do think the pedestrian bicycle movement will be an increasing mode of travel and of interest in, for both residents and tourists in this amazing Columbia River Gorge scenic area. And so I, I would caution that, even though it's a great improvement over the existing condition, that the, the design as it's proposed may be inadequate almost today the bridge is opened. And so I, I would encourage thinking a bit more expansively about that travel width, which is a net of 14 feet, as I understand it, 16 minus two and two way travel and, and bikes and pedestrians so close to one another. My experience looking at other facilities around the world is that just not enough, not enough elbow room there to make it feel safe and comfortable. And whether that means expanding on the west side only or going to both east and west with opposite lanes of travel or directions of travel, I would just encourage that consideration because retrofitting in the future, as Kevin noted, would be very expensive and it's often, maybe it wasn't Kevin, I'm sorry. It may have been Stuart that said that, but it's just, could be penny wise and pound foolish to try to avoid that, that cost now and try to retrofit later. So that would be one comment. The other is, I think it's possible, despite what Kevin asserted, which I generally agree with, that I think it's, it's possible to design a, a bridge that is elegant and has some identity and, and visual quality to it without overwhelming the, the natural beauty that is, of course, the priority. So I think both can be done, it has to be done in a sensitive way. And I would imagine the Columbia Gorge Commission will have some interest in seeing some architectural quality associated with it, so it doesn't look like the standard freeway bridge of the 1980s or 70s. So I think there's some ability to do some elegance without it being overwhelming. Of course, the extreme example, that's the Golden Gate Bridge, which really does stand out, but somehow feels harmonious with its magnificent environment and actually additive to it rather than, than a deduction from it. So just want to make a little pitch for, pitch for design quality there. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Take another minute. All right, I'm going to give a last call if you're on the fence. And I think that's about it then. So I'm going to keep us moving and we may still end on time here. So thank you again, everybody. Kevin, I'm going to turn it back over to you and wrap us up and talk about next steps. Oh, and you're on mute, Kevin.
You tell I'm on a, I'm on a different laptop than I'm, than I'm used to. Candace, thank you, and Angela, thank you as well for a wonderful presentation. We will be posting a recording of tonight's meeting on the port's website and also on our YouTube channel. We, the Port of Hood River does have a YouTube channel. And also on the port's website, you will also find digital copies of the supplemental draft EIS in its entirety or chapter by chapter, which is a little easier to digest. And there's other resources on this project going back to the 99 feasibility study. The EIS working group will be meeting again in early 2021. Those meetings are open to the public and so we certainly encourage all of you to keep an eye out for those notices. And we do post the minutes and the notices to those meetings on our website. And I anticipate that the EIS working group will be reviewing the themes from this open public comment period. And so that might be a good opportunity for the public to, to get a preview of things to come. We anticipate releasing the combined final EIS recorded decision, decision by the summer of 2021. Reminder that your comments will be published as a part of that final EIS. So it's important and we've got time for you to submit comments up to January 4th. So those will be included in the final document. And if you don't already, follow us on Facebook or Twitter because we will put periodic notices about the NEPA process on our social media feeds. So with that, on behalf of Federal Highways and the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Port of Hood River Board of Commissioners, I thank you all for participating tonight and giving your thoughts and participating in the presentation tonight. So thank you all. Really appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thanks, everybody. As Kevin said, we'll be posting this online and I'm going to close this down here. Thank you.